Okay. Open meeting, let's say, in accordance with the open meeting law, the Lake Pakon Commission has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there delivered or mailed or electronically mailed to the following daily record posted on the Lake Pakon Commission website. Just standing would give me a salute to the flag. Colleen, you'll take care of the flag.
Uh huh.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, founded on the foundations of liberty, justice, and justice for all. Thank you. Call or roll, please.
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Will Susan?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Bosowski? Probs?
Here.
Stevens? Steinbaum?
Fred, you're muted.
Bob, you shaved.
Hey.
You hear me now?
I'm tired of coronavirus.
Hofer Camp?
Yes.
Can you say your name again, last name?
Hofer Camp.
I'm, okay, so I'm saying it right?
I'll go, Hofer Camp, yes.
Hofer Camp, okay, good. And Tessier?
Here.
Go check. Senator? Gilfillan?
Here.
Hirschfeld?
Here.
Castillon? I think she's still trying to get on. Foley? Solaro?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Do we have the minutes for the last meeting?
Uh, no, those will be at next week's.
Okay, next week's, okay.
Right, because this is just a...
So, what do we, what do we, what do you have to deal with tonight? We have two issues, right?
Well, if, so, one thing was that, um, because we received the, um, HAB grant advance payment, Princeton Hydro asked that we put, put the invoices through that we had been, that they had been holding for us. So, um, so that's what the list of bills is there. Two of them had already been approved, um, and then two of them need to be approved. And then I had one remaining from Eric Snyder, our, one of our planners. So I just, I put that one in too. Um, so the total was, uh, ninety-three thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Does the treasurer move that list of bills? There you go.
Did you post then?
Um, I did. I sent everything out pretty late because I figured we were going to be talking about it, and we had some last-minute items that changed earlier today. So, um, so these are really just the HAB bills.
Do we have a... Yeah, we were late because we didn't get the funding, right?
We didn't get it.
Yeah, so...
You just read what they are?
Sure, it's, um, well, it's, so these are all invoices that Princeton Hydro has submitted since, um, March towards our HAB grant. So those are, um, you know, I have the invoice numbers here, but it, this would be towards the phosilox treatment, um, biochar installations, um, meet, I think probably meeting attendance, any, um, project management towards the HAB grant. Um, yeah, so that's what these...
And he sat on those, he sat on those invoices because we didn't have the money.
Correct, yep. But now we have received, on July twenty-second, we received the HAB grant advance payment of, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, so...
Wow.
But that money can only be used towards our HAB grant.
Of course, of course, make sure of that, too. Yeah, don't...
Right.
How much is this total towards the HAB grant?
Um, the, I'm sorry, what's your question? How much is the invoices?
Yeah, the invoices for the HAB grant total.
Um, it's about ninety-two thousand...
Five hundred.
Seven hundred dollars.
Okay, I didn't see the list, okay.
Yep.
We need a motion?
Yes.
So moves, do we approve the HAB grant invoices as submitted by Princeton Hydro?
Second.
Is there any questions, comments? Call or roll, please.
Crowley?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Will Susan?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Castillon?
Yes.
Probs?
Yes.
Hofer Camp?
Yes.
Steinbaum?
Yes.
Tessier?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, I just ran the total from this list on my calculator. I come up with ninety-two, four fifty-six, eighteen. The bill list does contain another seven eighty-seven fifty for Eric Snyder, the planner.
So I make a motion that we approve that other invoice from Eric.
Second.
Comments or questions? Call or roll, please.
Crowley?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Will Susan?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Castillon?
Yes.
Probs?
Yes.
Hofer Camp?
Yes.
Steinbaum?
Yes.
Tessier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, what are the two items that we're going to discuss?
Um, so we need to...
Let's do harvesting last.
Okay, um, okay, so the other, the other item is, uh, the Higlin agreement. Um, we've talked about this in a prior meeting, uh, Green Pond, Fred Steinbaum and I went and met with, um, representatives of Green Pond, and they were interested in, um, a demonstration of a new technology they've got on their lake, which is called a dash boat. It's a diver-assisted suction harvesting boat. So what they want to do is come onto the lake and see if they can, um, use the sonar on that boat to identify, um, Eurasian water milfoil in, in more turbid waters than they have on Green Pond, and also, uh, water chestnut. So those are, those are, uh, those are two ways they want to try and use the sonar, and then they'd like to do a half-day or full-day demonstration of their, um, diver-assisted suction harvesting on a section of the lake. So, um, it's, does not cost the commission any, um, money. The only thing that we have, um, with this agreement is that we've, we've submitted it to Murphy Durkin, our attorney, and he suggested that there be some change in language to the hold harmless agreement that's included in the, in, within the agreement. So, uh, once he has made that revision, we would be, um, well, the commission would be approving, entering into that agreement with Higlin, um, and the, the foundation would also be entering into the agreement, I, yes. Um, so, that's, you know, that's what you'd be approving tonight.
That, it's nice that they want to give us a little experiment here, but the main thing is that hold harmless, if there's any, God forbid, accidents, we don't, we're not going to be involved in it.
Right.
So, maybe we could, maybe we could approve this agreement subject to the approval of the whole harmless clause by our attorney.
All right.
And, and... You don't have to lose any time, you know?
And Ron, should we get an insurance cert from them?
Yeah, he's got to give us...
Yeah, that was requested.
Get his insurance, so we're named as additionally insured, yes.
Yep.
Okay, and does DEP have to approve it?
I thought we approved...
Uh, no, I don't.
At the last meeting.
No, he, he, say that again, Fred.
I, I thought we approved this at the last meeting pending...
No, the hold harmless clause was not good. We wanted to make sure it was air, more airtight.
Is, is there some protocol for them cleaning the boat off so they're not bringing anything into the lake in some way to ship that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they will be doing that. They have their own, uh, boat, um, wash station for Green Pond.
But they have a location they can do it when they come to Lake Pakon?
No, they'll do it when they leave Green Pond.
They'll put it on a trailer against some washing, yeah.
Colleen, get...
Is that adequate, Fred?
You, you have any idea when this will be done? Colleen? Any idea when they will come?
Maybe.
You're muted, Colleen.
Oh, my internet froze there for a second, so I didn't hear what you said.
Uh, Colleen, is there any idea when they will come and where they will work?
Um, so they, they want to come soon, uh, so sometime in August, and, um, so for the diver-assisted suction harvesting, um, we were considering the canals, thought that would be a good location to, to try it because some, the harvesters can't get in there. Um, and then, um, for the water chestnut, that would be likely up by Liffey Island, and Eurasian water milfoil, they could really go anywhere.
Crescent Cove.
Sure, yeah, anywhere.
So they're going to give, they have to give us advanced notice, so make, you know, Fred, if you want to be out there, you want to know when it is and where it is.
Yep.
Is that why you're asking the question, Fred?
Yeah, I, I'm very interested. I, I think, you know, their lake is rather pristine, uh, they have some funds, they have a lot of volunteers, they're heavily invested in this. If this can, if this can identify different species, it may enable us to control, uh, some of the invasives better, and it may have application to a, to a small cove like Crescent Cove.
Good. So, Colleen, make sure they give us at least, you know, week's notice, so if we want to have any observation, we can do it, you know?
Okay.
Are they going to supply us with some kind of metrics or some kind of results to see the efficacy of what they're doing?
Yeah, they're going to provide a report at the end of it.
And is, is Fred good with them doing this? Ludlow?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have no problem with it, and like you said, as long as they're cleaning their equipment before they go to, before they, uh, launch in Lake Pakon, uh, that should not be a problem, you know? Even if they do it before they get to the lake, just as long as they're not putting any equipment in another lake before Pakon, that would be fine.
It's more than the boat, it's the dive equipment, too, right?
Yep, yeah, and, and again, um, they should be pretty comfortable with doing that, that should be pretty routine for them, you know? Just making sure, you know, inspecting all your equipment, making sure there are no plant fragments or anything, you know, laying on the, uh, on the equipment.
Hey, Fred, Steinbaum?
Yeah.
A question for you. They, they mentioned here hookah breathing equipment, is that surface air supplied breathing for them?
Yeah, I think that's...
It's in quotes.
That's surface air, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you, question?
Yeah, that was the question, is it, it's hookah, and I assume that's what they're talking about.
Yes, I believe that's, that you're correct. It's a simple, uh, system, rather safe.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? So what do we need? Colleen, you think we need, we need a resolution subject to the approval of the hold harmless agreement by our attorney?
I'm sorry, Ron?
Yes.
They're going to be using the park as their access point?
I have no idea. Colleen, do you know anything about that?
They could either access from Opakon State Park, or they could access from lease.
Okay, you guys will just let us know either way, I guess.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, should we just make a motion to approve subject to the attorney?
Yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, I move that we, uh, approve this subject to the attorney's approval of the agreement and subject to getting, having an insurance certification.
Second.
Any more questions, comments? Call or roll, please, Colleen.
Um, Crowley?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Will Susan?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Castillon?
Yes.
Probs?
Yes.
Hofer Camp?
Yes.
Do they hear that? Hofer Camp?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Steinbaum?
Yes.
Tessier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, the last item, second item we have is we're, you know, now that we're going to get the money, we had several discussions about whether we should go out and hire somebody now that will have the funds to harvest the weeds. I, back and forth with Colleen, and then we did turn up some old documents from way back when the commission started, when we bought the weed harvesters. So, my concern always was, were we subject to the public contracts law? And we are. And it went to bid last time, just like it should be under the public contracts law. So, to do that, we would need, besides all the boilerplate documentation, we would need a thing that we call scope of the work. What are you going to do, how many days, who's going to do what, and so forth and so on, and the price. So, rather than reinvent the wheel, I think, was that what, I asked Fred today to dig around if he saw anything, oh, Colleen looked on the old records, Dan McCarthy looked, was going to look around. Uh, Fred, were you able to find any, um, Dr. Fred, were you able to find any old scope of the work when they harvested the weeds?
Um, yeah, I went through our old records, I, I was actually in our office today, and I could not find anything either on our archived computer drives or in our filing cabinets. However, I did ask staff if they had any sort of similar documentation for some other lakes, and I have, uh, one of our senior project managers, he's supposed to be getting me a document from Strawbridge Lake that we may be able to use as a template. So I'm, I'm still waiting to hear back from Chris.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to read necessarily reinvent the wheel, yeah.
Right.
So just so you guys know on the timeline, we'd have to put this spec, we'd have to get this spec, let's say Fred's successful, we have to tailor it to fit our situation, have to get it in a paper, takes two or three days, has to be in a paper, minimum of ten days before we receive it, and then we have, would have to have, what I'm going to guess, a special meeting because of the timing to award the contract. So we're talking here, definitely the third week in August, best-case scenario. Um, is it, is it worth it at that point to get into the harvesting of the weeds the third, fourth week in August, or should, is, is the season lost to us? That's, I guess, the kind of discussion we should have.
I'd be interested in Fred's opinion about whether it's meaningful to do this in the big scheme of the lake management.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I've been thinking about this, and, and there's a couple things going on. One is, this was certainly not a normal year, um, not the way the weather was in the winter, that we had a lot more weeds this year, but with COVID, you know, a lot more people, I think, are going to be on the lake after, um, Labor Day, because that's what we've seen earlier in the season, and is that people were on the lake much earlier because quarantine, there's not a lot you can do, but you know what, when you're on a boat with your family, it's very easy to social distance from other people. So, given the unusual circumstances, I could see even the third week of August, I could see doing some harvesting, because I, you know, I, I envision people still being on the lake more than usual going into the fall season. If this was a normal year, you know, after Labor Day, you know, when the recreational activity goes down quite a bit, I would say, hold it, but for this year, you know, I could see doing some harvesting this year. That's my opinion.
That, you know, sounds reasonable, you know, I just wanted to let everybody, anybody else have a agree, disagree.
This is Mark Crowley, I have a question, Fred.
Yeah.
Fred, does doing any harvesting this year help us at all for next spring and next year?
Um, it, it always helps, because when we harvest, we're removing nutrients, so if we don't harvest those plants, as they decompose, they settle down to the sediments, and then they refuel additional, uh, future plant growth or algae growth. So, it always helps to do some harvesting, um, from an ecological standpoint, because you're removing nutrients.
To me, that's the most important reason to go do it, other than the season, because we don't know when the weather's going to change in September, but if it does help us in the spring to start getting a handle on it, uh, I think it'd be worthwhile. Thank you.
Anybody else?
How, I'm just mean, regarding the insurance, like, same thing with them, they're going to be responsible for the insurance and no harm clause and insurance cert and...
Like in our normal bid spec, Bob, in this day, they got, still they have insurance to hold harmless clause, which we use, yeah, of course.
Right, because that's, that's on our watch instead of DEP doing it.
Yeah, that's right, we got to be sure that we're, we're not liable, yeah.
And I, I, I think DEP provides some supervision, we would have to, I think, provide some supervision if they're directly contact with us, so we could say we did it responsibly.
Yeah, well, I would, I would think Mike could play a hand in that.
Yeah, haven't they offered to supply some truck drivers and, and, uh, some help in offloading?
Yeah, DEP said we could use the trucks, even though they cut, you know, they put a freeze on all of our, all the equipment till we got the results of the accident. That, didn't they, Colleen, said we would have the trucks, right?
Correct, yep. Um, one thing with the trucks, uh, one of them does need to repair, it's about four hundred dollars to repair, so I should have that invoice, I'm hoping I'll reach out to the, um...
Get that fixed, yeah.
Yep.
I have, I have two questions. I haven't been in Crescent Cove in, in over a week, does anybody know the current status there of the weeds?
I was in Crescent Cove a week ago Wednesday, and around the edges, it's, it's covered, um, with this green vegetation back in the north end of the River Styx, uh, way back by Tim Morris's house, past Whitheralls, by Whitheralls Old Duck Farm, it's, it's a mess. Um, but the center of the area, the navigate, navigational areas actually look pretty good, and those, uh, that aeration system that they put in there, um, seems to really be doing a good job. Uh, I was talking to one of the residents there, and his comment was, I've never seen it look so good in the center, and they should have done that long ago.
I have a question, a logical question for Fred Love now. I, I heard a new theory, uh, I, I'm trying to understand why we haven't had habs, and we've discussed why we haven't in the past, and, and why I'm finding much less weeds in many places where we've had them more severe this year, and I've remarked that the lake looks very dark. It, you can't see the bottom in most places where you could before, it seems even darker and more brown this year. And, uh, the question I have, I, I've heard that there's a brown algae, that's a benign algae, that is poisoning this and probably utilizing a lot of the nutrients that then won't become available for the habs and the weeds. Is that, is that theory, uh, correct?
Well, there's, I mean, there's a lot going on in your question, um, but yes, there are some, there are two groups of brown algae in freshwater systems. One group are called chrysophytes, the others are called diatoms, and they can, whenever they bloom, they can make the water look brown. Um, for recreational lakes, they're usually not a problem, they don't produce toxins, they're grazed on by the little microanimals in the water, so we absolutely prefer to have the brown algae than the cyanotoxin-producing blue-green algae. Um, in, in drinking water supplies, they can be problematic because they can clog filters, but for recreational lakes, we absolutely prefer those types of algae. I think what happened this year was, um, we did not get those, those conditions for the habs early in the season the way we did last year. So, and remember, I had some photos last year to show that Lake Pakon typically gets some pretty nasty blue-green algae blooms, but they usually happen at the end of the growing season, typically after Labor Day. Um, so I have a whole series of photos before 2019 that every fall, when it's still warm, we, we would get those habs, and people would send me those photographs. It's just that after Labor Day, people aren't recreating as much on the lake. So, what was so unusual last year was, we have the circumstances of the warm weather and the nutrients coming in early in June, which really stimulated those blooms to take off, where this year, we had a cooler spring, and we were getting nutrients, but we really didn't have that setup of those intense storms and a few sunny days to really let the habs get going. So, that made it more difficult for the habs to get a hold of the lake the way they did in 2019.
Do your dishes confirm that the lake is, is, is darker, it's, it's, uh, much more, less visibility as, as I've been noticing?
I can tell you that, now, I haven't looked at the July data, but I do know our secu depth readings have been not as, as, as deep as they have been in past years. So that supports what you're saying, in that the clarity has not been, the clarity was lower this year, which means it would be darker. So that, that agrees with your observations, in that our secu depths aren't as, as deep as they have been in the past, but again, a lot of the brown algae can be attributed to that.
Is this a cause for concern, or should we be thankful?
Uh, you know what, I would be thankful, and, and in, in the long-term scope of Lake Pakon, you know, we obviously want to take care of the nutrients, but say sometime in the future when we have a good handle on the nutrients, then we may want to consider something called biom manipulation, which is where we want to stock a lot of large, um, fish-eating fish in the lake to sort of get those smaller fish under control, because the smaller fish eat the little zooplankton, and I know from the data we have at Lake Pakon, you don't have a lot of zooplankton. The zooplankton are what eat those brown algae, so we need more zooplankton, but right now we're focusing almost entirely on nutrient control because of the habs. So, sometime in the future when we have the, the habs under control, because the habs aren't eaten by the zooplankton, so we need to get them under control. When we get them under control, and then we have the good algae, I would rather have to deal with the good algae than the bad algae, but at that point, we may want to consider something in lake to deal with that.
Yeah, it just, it just doesn't look healthy.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, and a lot of times, like, in the late fall or early spring, if the lake would look really brown, and you're like, boy, we haven't had rain, but the lake looks really turbid, that's because of a diatom or a chrysophyte bloom. Those brown algae really tend to bloom in the spring and the summer, but they, they can, they can bloom in the summer as well, but usually it's the spring and the fall that they really take off.
How severe can they, that get?
I mean, it can get fairly turbid, um, but again, they're not, you know, they may make the water look a little turbid, but they're not producing cyanotoxins, they generally don't produce nasty scums, they're not producing mats, they're not producing, um, uh, bad odors, so it's more of a, of a turbidity issue, more of that, you know, the clarity isn't there.
That, does that affect habitat?
No, it really won't affect habitat, more so that, um, what we want to do is, we'd like to get the fishery in more balance, because I do know you have a lot of small fish compared to larger, you know, um, uh, like bass, walleye, hybrid strippers, anything that eats those smaller fish. You would like to have more of those, and I'm sure fishermen would like to have more of those as well. The nice thing about having more of the larger fish-eating fish is they keep those smaller fish under control, that allows your zooplankton to bloom, and then they naturally control those algae.
Yeah, I, I just read an article on Lake Tahoe where they remarked that not so many years ago, they could see down a hundred and fifty feet, and now they're seeing seventy or eighty, and they're getting very concerned. It's a lot different.
Yeah, it's, I, I did a lot of my graduate work at Lake Tahoe, so, yep.
Tough life.
Yeah, it was, no, I can't complain.
Okay, so, go ahead, Ron.
You're going to try to get me that, you're going to try to get Colleen and I one of those old specs for a scope of the work?
Yep, I'm going to, uh, reach out to Chris after this and see if I can get it and send it to Colleen either tonight or tomorrow.
Make sure it's a word document.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And if you want to play with it a little bit, you know, we have no pride of ortho-ship, there may be some technicalities in there that probably only you and Colleen would understand, but, yeah, let's see if we can't get it.
Yep.
Okay.
Ron, um, I didn't look through my old regional planning board files, because I assumed, um, you were, you and Colleen and Fred were going to look through the records on file for the regional planning board, um, at the state park.
Well, we didn't do that, because Fred found us something current, so...
Okay.
And the technology and the wording may be different now than it was twenty, I'm sure it is, twenty years ago, but...
Yeah, well, I was speaking about the, uh, because you were going back to the beginning of the commission, which isn't that far off from... which isn't that far off from the end of the region planning board with the documents that I might have. And I did check with Cliff London, who was the former chair of the regional planning board, and he probably has paper copies in his basement.
Good, if you get him, that'd be great.
He did say that this was typed up on some old archaic word processing system that's no longer available, so.
Probably Word.
Probably like WordPerfect or something.
Probably WordPerfect.
Yeah, yep.
That's why I said I want it in a Word document, so we don't have to retype it, we can play with it.
Well, just let me, if you need me to look in my old records, or if I got to get Cliff involved if I don't have it, but...
Yeah, take a look. Anything, anything any of us can get, Dan, would be a help.
Okay, will do. Yeah, Dan, I did find the...
The time is up, yes.
Yeah, I did find the Brady Bridge dredging bid specification, and I couldn't find the harvesting, but it was funny to find that. It's like, oh, I remember this.
Yeah.
We spent a lot of time talking about that in early days, yep.
All right, looks like we made some progress, guys. That's great. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? We're going to just go first, and we'll keep you guys informed, and as soon as we can get this together, we'll have to have another meeting to to set it up, a quickie, you know?
Ron, do we, when we put it out to bid, do we have to put a monetary limit or some kind of?
No, no. They bid what they bid. If it doesn't fit, if it doesn't fit our budget, we have to reject it. But if it comes in and we think it's a reasonable amount of money and we can cover the bill, then we'll have that discussion, a full board will have that discussion. Nope, the full board is going to make the decision.
Well, what might happen, and I'm just thinking this because I've already been in touch with a couple of the contractors, is that they're going to bid a daily rate. And then within the contract, you could probably put not to exceed, because from what they've said, just because of the weed density, that they're not going to bid a per acre fee or a, you know, or, or give a prediction on how many days.
Yeah, because it could rain, we could have rainy days, they don't want to cut, you know?
Right, and I think that we'll be limited, you know, typically, we pull our, the Commission harvesters by October 15th, so if you figure maybe they can't start until third week in August, or, you know, even maybe September, then it'll be a six or eight week program.
Yeah, great. We get some weeds cut, and get a head start on next year.
And we have multiple bidders, Ron?
I hope so. Who the hell knows? You put it in the paper. Anybody we know that does that, we'll be glad to mail one to them, just in case they don't read the ad. I always do that anyway, my stuff. You mail them out to people you know in that business.
Always looks better if there's more than one bid.
So if everybody could, anybody, especially Fred Love, if you know anybody that's in that business, give us their name, so we can, Colleen can email it to them, you know?
Yep. Can I just ask one question for my own benefit here? In terms of the money that we're going to use to do this emergency harvesting, are we going to be taking dollars away from repairs and other things that we should be doing for the harvesters going into winter and getting ready for next spring?
We're taking the money from the 350 we would have given the DEP to cut the weeds.
Okay, so what, what's going on with the staff at this point? Are they?
Nothing, we're still good. I mean, well, they're, they're on their payroll. In the 350 was their salary, so if we have to pick up Mike's salary because he's going to, we have to reimburse him for Mike's salary and anybody else's, whoever's working, Bill and Doug, then we'd have to, we'd reimburse them for that.
Um, just so, you know, we had a conversation with Mark Texel at DEP. He said that DEP, you know, if the Commission was able to support contracted weed harvesting services, they would be able to support salaries to run the dump trucks and the dump trucks. So, that was kind of a way of, you know, a cooperative.
So we're in good shape money-wise, I believe.
I just want to make sure we're not dipping into our repair budget and...
No, 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 no. We're dipping into that 355 that, that would have been gone if the DEP was still...
So I understand what Dan is saying, and I think we can work backwards with that not to exceed if we need to, because that'll be about, you know, I think, I did write a little paragraph summary on, on what I think the repairs were at at the end of last year, so that was between 30 and 35,000. If you, you know, if you assume that some of the harvesters that were on the water this year were just refurbished instead of repaired fully, maybe there's a little bit more there. And then, you know, the cost of maybe repairing the harvester that was in the accident, we're going to have to see what that is. But I think we can work backwards and just say, you know, not to exceed, you know, 200,000 if we figure...
There's not that many days left in the season when we get to that point.
This is Mark Crowley. I think when it's time for us to vote on this issue, we need to have all the facts of exactly what the state parks is going to pay, what we're going to pay, if it's a daily rate, what the budget is, where the money's coming out of the 350, who's paying for workers. I need to know all that to be able to vote on this.
Absolutely.
At this point, it's just to move forward with the bid process, which I think, do we, I think we need to have a vote just to move forward with that bid process, right, to be putting that into the paper to start accepting bids for that.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I just want to make two points. We'll have, we'll have enough money if we receive the money that's been promised to us. And I'm not sure with the state of New Jersey as it is, that that's going to happen. As you know, we had difficulty getting our last quarter payment.
I brought it up, Fred.
I'm sorry?
I said, that's why I brought it up. Before we vote, and we got to make sure we have the money in hand.
We can't award the contract unless we have the cash. There's no award of the contract, unless we have...
We have the cash to award that contract, but going forward, I mean, within limits, but my concern is going forward. You know, we can't bankrupt the Commission, so we have to, we're dependent still.
Fred, you can't bankrupt. We're dealing with pot we had. Okay.
Well, and we have heard from DEP that we'll be receiving our first quarterly payment at the beginning of August, so that would be...
What happened to our last quarterly payment that we didn't receive?
It, so the Lake Patcon fund, the boat licensing fees did not accrue to 500,000 last year for fiscal year '20, and that's why, so that money never accrued, and that's why we didn't receive it.
So everybody needs to be aware that we lost 25% of our funding from last year. And we're, and the state's now in tough, tough shape, so, so we can't assume that we're going to get this funding, at least in my, my...
They said the beginning of August, but before we get to putting this in the newspaper, Fred, we'll know whether or not we got the money.
Yeah, I have one, one other concern. The gentleman who drowned, we were told was really the mechanic, the diesel mechanic, who, who really did the major repairs on these machines. And I, Commissioner Rosowski isn't with us evidently, but I wonder if DEP is, has been looking to hire a second full-time person who's capable of, of overhauling these machines properly. Evidently, we don't have anybody, or the DEP doesn't have anybody on hand who can do that.
Well, we can get into, we can, Colleen, send them something in writing and ask them that.
I don't know.
So I did, I, when we wrote, when we talked to the governor's office, and I sent a follow-up email, I did request, because from what I understand, there's a hiring freeze that would affect our ability, well, the DEP's ability to hire somebody for that position. So I did request from Jane Cohen, who was the, what was her title? Marty, do you remember? He's not... Policy advisor for science, science and policy advisor or something. So anyway, she, um, so I did request that they follow up and see if we could get an exemption on that hiring freeze. And I will follow up with her.
Very good, because I can see what's going to happen in the spring, because Mike's already told us he's not capable of doing that kind of work on these machines.
Right.
And we'll end up in the spring, and none of the machines will be ready.
Well, it's in addition to Mike not being able to do that line of work, there's also a safety issue, because he's the only full-time employee, and he can't be up there by himself trying to reposition and move 400-pound cutter bars and trying to align them on either side. It's a minimum of two people.
Exactly right. So, Colleen, that needs to be put to the front of what we need to follow up on, I think.
Okay.
This is Mark Crowley. It sounds like we need a plan from the state, if we're giving them the money from our commission, of how they're going to satisfy our MOU to cut weeds next year. I think they have to come back and tell us that they have the people, the staff, and requirements to take our money and to do it.
Mark, it's great, but they're going to tell us they can't make any plans until the investigation's complete.
But I just ask, and really, the onus is on them to make sure that they have the correct staff. You know, to us, it's an outsource. Either way we look at it, we're getting the money, we're doing the outsource. Matter of fact, we just discussed going to a different outsource to get it done. I, we have to look at this as, as another bid for next year, of whether the state parks are capable to do it, or, or we continue with someone else.
That's a possibility, Mark.
Good point, good point.
The possibility, after they analyze this, they decide they don't want to do it anymore.
That very well, very well be, and we should be prepared. That's why I think it's great that we go through, what Fred's talking about now is putting the document together. And one other comment, Colleen, you asked about a resolution tonight. I don't think you need a resolution tonight, because we don't have the document to read that says what we're going out for bid.
No, we don't. We don't even have to, we need a resolution to award the contract.
Right, right. Well, we need a resolution to put out the contract, but we haven't, none of us have read the contract yet, so I think...
Yeah, we don't have it yet.
Go ahead and get the document from Fred, get it marked up, and then we do a resolution approving that that's what we want to go out for bid, and then, yes, we do a resolution.
We get to, hopefully, in the next, in the next, it has to be another week, week and a half, because we don't have a lot of time.
I, I agree. And it's very important, because I think we need to look in the future for next year if the state parks can't do it, or says they don't want to do it.
And we got, and then we have the specs. We already had a trial period, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we can have that put together by our next meeting, which is on Monday, so it's a week from today.
Do, do we need to, if we're going to undertake this venture with this contractor, do you have to notify our insurance carrier that we're doing this?
Yes, yes, we will.
Colleen will take care of that?
Yep. Let's, let's get the document together first. That's the biggest, that's a big task. Let's get that document.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, it has to be open to public. We at least have to open.
All right.
That's okay.
I opened the meeting to public, so anyone wish to be heard?
Is there anyone out there?
Well, if you have to...
I have one, one person has their hand raised. You're unmuted, you can, you can speak. Jim? So there are, I've spoken with two contractors who do have some availability. It's, it's limited. They may only have one or two machines available to be on the lake. So it won't be the same program, it won't be the same level. And I just want to make sure that you said to be on the lake and by the third week in August, and it's, it's potentially, because we need to have the bids. And, you know, there's a few things that need to fall into place before that happens. So this is kind of all, subject to everything falling into place, and, and, right. Is there anyone else?
Okay, Fred, your motion, you can go with your motion again.
Move to Jer.
Second.
Comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Jer, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Have a good one. Have a good.